Okay, you may continue.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll call the North Smithfield School Committee Meeting of July 20th, 2021 to order. Clerk, please call a roll.
Chair Lombardi.
President.
Mayor.
Here.
Bada.
Yeah.
Mr. Cunnell.
Here.
Here.
We have a quorum. Let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Through the flag.
Through the flag.
Of the United States.
Of the United States of America.
And through the republic which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions? Or does anybody want to pull anything off the consent agenda? Just Peg, I don't, I can hardly see you. So if you need to say anything, just speak up or wave your hands or something.
Okay, what? There we go.
She doesn't want to zoom in, but.
Actually, I do have one comment about the consent agenda, and it was just when I looked at the W. D. Mason quote. It's still saying North Smithfield Junior Senior High School. So just thinking, you know, as we move forward, whether we can just actually be a high school.
Very good.
Yes. All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, let's see. I use two screens here, so give me a little patience. So go on to the next thing, superintendent's report?
Sure. I don't have a second camera set up to point to me. Do you want to go to the podium? Or would you like to look at Peg while I speak? Okay, bye.
Don't come back again.
Here we go. One second. Next time around, I'll have a second camera so that we can pick up multiple people. I really don't have as much to go over as far as to opening for September, except that we have every intention of opening five days a week, all in. Here's the thing, we, we're still waiting for the Department of Ed for some of the guidance as far as how next year it's going to look like. One of the things that I should mention is that the policy that we just reviewed, it is a, as far as masking, I just want to hit a couple of items on this because it does have implications obviously for the fall. Number one, that masks will be mandated on all school buses. That's part of the federal guidance in public transportation. This is, it's after that, when the students arrive at school, that's when it's going to start getting a bit murky. There is no mandate, no extension of any executive order from the governor. There's no mandate right now from the Rhode Island Department of Health, the Department of Education, that mandates mask wear. It is highly, highly, highly recommended, but it's not mandatory regardless of vaccination status. So basically, it, the state and the Department of Health is leading it to every, every district to come up with their own policies and protocols regarding how we handle COVID with, upon reopening. Now, the policy that you just reviewed was prepared by legal and it is absolutely the minimal policy. It basically says masks must be worn on buses because that's federal mandate. Once student or staff arrives at school, masks are recommended, but they're optional. So I actually had a meeting today with all the superintendents across the state and another meeting with the Department of Health later on. And we're trying to get some clarity on this because essentially it looks like it's every district for themselves, which is very problematic because as you know, the masking is political. We are in a situation where we can't ask if somebody has been vaccinated. What I will put out as a couple of suggestions and things that we will be looking at. I will have more information to share because the Department of Health just put out some guidelines today for review. It hasn't been finalized yet, so I can't really tell you as far as what distancing will look like, you know, what the exact protocols will be. As far as masking, I would recommend that at least at the elementary school, at NSCS, where everybody is 12, is under 12 and nobody has a vaccination, that masks are considered for the students. I would also want to put out there that our entire focus next year, and this is true with every district, every school across the state, will be in full in-person instruction. We will not be offering a distance learning choice for families, right? It's all in. Now, the other piece with that is that, again, because the whole masking thing becomes problematic, we will continue to have outbreaks of COVID in our classrooms. We do have, and again, everything we're doing right now is a snapshot in time. We still have Delta variant. We have a number of things that are happening right now. We have increasing cases. We're not going to ask students if you've been vaccinated as you walk in the door. However, if we have an outbreak in a classroom and we're doing our contact tracing, we will be asking for proof of vaccination. Because what that means is that if you've been vaccinated, you do not have to quarantine. For students, I would even say some staff who have not been vaccinated, if they get COVID, they are quarantined. If there are close contact of somebody who has COVID, they're quarantined. If they have proof of vaccination, they do not have to quarantine. Students can continue to come into school. All right, so that is, and again, this is, I'm going to be following guidance from the Department of Health and CDC. I can't mandate masks. School committee can create a policy or can create protocols which would require masking at certain grade levels of certain schools of certain situations. Interscholastically may require masking for athletes. We follow the guidance from the Department of Health interscholastically. But in absence of guidance, we really have to be very cognizant and very aware of the risks going forward. When a student has to quarantine, it will be asynchronous, meaning they can't just, our classrooms will not be live streaming next year. The teacher's focus is on the kids in the room in front of him or her. Right, so if a student is unvaccinated, has to quarantine, they will be at home for the seven days. Right, the guidance that's coming from the Department of Health right now is a seven-day quarantine where a PCR test is given on day five. If it's negative, the student could return on day eight. Again, that's only for students who are unvaccinated. Right, during that time, work will be provided through Google Classroom, will be uploaded. But it's not, we're not going to be equipped to do a live stream from a classroom. Again, our focus has to be on the in-person instruction. So these are just a few things that are right now brewing as far as the opening in September. We are looking for much clearer guidance and possibly direction from the governor, from the Department of Ed, the Department of Health. In absence of that, we have a whole series of recommendations with a, and I hate to say this, and it sounds terrible, but they figure it out. So we will figure it out. We will do absolutely the best thing for our community, for our students, for our teachers. We will offer, you know, fantastic instruction. We will keep our building safe. We will keep our students and our staff safe to the best ability that we are allowed to. So that's, right now, that's, that's all I have, just a few comments about the reopening. I will have far more details coming out in the, in the coming weeks and certainly by the next school committee meeting.
Superintendent? Before I ask any questions, does anybody have any questions? Superintendent?
I'm sorry, Chairman, I have a question at the appropriate time.
You sure?
Okay, Chairman, I have three, I have three questions, but they are pointed and very direct, okay? My first question is, is there any plans or would it be possible, you know, this is directed to superintendent, that we could have a testing, I hear there's a lot more emphasis now on self-testing, that we could have, are we going to have those self-tests on site and if not, could we get some? So people, if they want to test, they can test. They do that self, the self-administered test.
The Department of Health today released some testing guidelines. Yes, we will have binex tests. We will have other tests. And let me tell you, Department of Health is recommending that we hire additional staff to do testing and contact tracing because they are not going to be doing it anymore, not to the degree that they have in the past year. So we may not just see that, that binex testing, which athletes will still have to take the binex tests, but we may be administering our own PCR tests. Again, this is all very nebulous. A lot of questions were asked. We were told that, well, you can just hire more staff to help you with this. We still have to go through and how do we handle consent if we're having people doing PCR tests on site to send out to a lab? Again, we just got a whole bunch of information today and it's still under review. So yes, we will be doing testing to some extreme or another next year.
Thank you. And my second question was simply, and Mr. Chair, maybe you could have a say on this with the board. Would it be worth our while to have a meeting before, I hate to have too many meetings, but some kind of joint communication and meeting with the other school districts, the surrounding districts on this mask issue so that we're all sort of on the same, see if we could all come to some, have an agreement? And the reason I say that is because we're all so close, you know, Barrowville, Lincoln, we interact so much with them and we're all so close. It almost seems, I mean, we're not isolated communities right now. Everybody's out and about. So, you know, we're in our neighboring communities right now. Would it make any sense to try and, you know, have a uniform policy, at least among our neighbors and ourselves?
We are, we are absolutely doing that. In fact, the policy that you just reviewed, that's going in front of, I think, 23 different school committees. So we are working together to try to keep on the same page. We are also working with the Department of Health and the Department of Education to get them on the same page as us. So yes, we're working very closely, not only districts across the state, but within our own consortium, which is, which is predominantly, we work very closely as part of a, an organization with Smithfield, Barrowville.
Right.
Cumberland, North Smithfield. So we go by the network consortium and we do a lot of planning, a lot of work and a lot of helping one another.
And the last thing I have is more just a comment. You know, I do some work with a number of math schools and Massachusetts schools and something I heard today, not officially but unofficially, again, this is unofficially, they're starting to tell some of the younger kids, be prepared to mask in the fall, you know, even in school. Again, that's not official, it's unofficial, but I am hearing that, so, you know, for what it's worth. Again, we're six, we're six or seven weeks out from that, but that's what I'm hearing from masks.
And it's, a lot of what I discussed tonight is also a snapshot in time. In two, four weeks, we can change again.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Chair, Commissioner, I mean Superintendent.
Mr. Jones, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So to Mr. Cunnell's point and then to the superintendent's point, we are at a snapshot in time. So maybe instead of planning more of a collaborative meeting between different school departments and school districts, maybe depending on what guidance is put out or recalibrated over the next couple of weeks, may want to consider putting out a public forum or a public meeting for parents who are coming back to North Smithfield schools or especially if their parents were sending their children to schools for the first time, who may want to come and talk about concerns they may have, get total clarity on what the masking policy or non-policy would be, you know, a reiteration of what the superintendent just said about the quarantine policy. That may be helpful, or, I mean, I'm open to discussion about that because I know it's the end of August and what have you. So, but if we would, if we were to do an in-person meeting, Mr. Cunnell, I think I'd rather lean that way more North Smithfield.
And if I can add to that, part of that, the draft policy that you reviewed calls for community input. So again, the policy is very basic and it basically says, follow what the law says, follow what the governor says, follow what the Department of Health says. It also then talks about developing your own protocols. And part of the developing of protocols is to have input from the community. So, and again, in some of the slides that I will share from the Department of Health, again, basically said, it's up to each district to create their own policies. Do it with the input of your community, your constituents, your stakeholders. So yes, that, that is definitely part of the plan.
So, Mr. Jones, you also. So Superintendent, I just want to clarify a few things that have been said right here. But it seems that when, I want to make sure that we're talking directly to our constituents here. Right now, today, things may change tomorrow or other guidance may come out. But we are working with, in doing very similar things to most, with most of the districts in Rhode Island.
Right.
So I know that you said every district's on their own, but they're really not because we have the, you know, many of us have the same attorney, so it's not like, I don't, I don't want to put out that every district's doing their own thing. I mean, we're doing things that are similar. I know for a fact, the Barrowville, I believe Lincoln. I don't know if Smithfield's voted on it, but we're, we're not, you know, even though we're doing our own thing, we're doing things that are similar in other districts.
Absolutely.
That's correct?
Yes.
And presently, I, you know, I just want to make sure that this is clear, that masks are highly recommended for all students, but they're not at this point mandated. That's correct, right? At least in schools.
Yep, that is correct.
I understand interscholastically may have different rules, busing has different rules. But at least at this point, this is what the guidance and this is what other districts are doing.
That is correct. Again, Department of Health said you may come up with your own protocols. You may want to have certain grade levels masks. You may want to, again, there's, there's a lot of variation. But that is for a district to decide. As far as the basic regulations across the state is that masking will be optional for all people regardless of vaccination status, regardless of age.
But that we're encouraging people who want to wear masks to wear them, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Does anybody have any further questions? All right, Superintendent, if you want to proceed.
Well, I'd like to turn this over to Claire Arnold. She has two items.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. St. Jean. Good evening, school committee. Chair Lombardi. There are two items that are coming up. We have SR2 applications and remembrance of Linda Newman. And I would like to start with the remembrance of Linda Newman. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to remember Linda. Linda was a curriculum consultant that worked with me and our teachers in North Smithfield for years. And I recently learned that she passed away this past February. She had had a long and courageous battle with cancer. When I was appointed curriculum director, I think it was 2009, the Department of Ed simultaneously adopted new standards. They were common core standards. And what that in effect did was make every single curriculum, K to 12, ELA, math, some of our science, our social studies outdated instantaneously. And it was a little bit overwhelming for me, as you could imagine, on day one that this happened. And it was a stroke of luck or the grace of God that I met Linda Newman. And Linda was a retired educator. She had been a teacher, an administrator, an assistant superintendent, and then started a consulting business, a consulting company. And with the race to the top phones at the time, we were able to hire a curriculum consultant. The moment I met her, I was smart enough, I didn't know a lot, but I was smart enough to stop and pause and take a breath when you know you're in the presence of someone that can teach you. And I knew I wanted to learn everything I could from Linda. Linda was the epitome of a professional. She was incredibly knowledgeable, conscientious, detail-oriented, well-dressed and like literally the most organized person, like organized beyond belief. The curriculum she developed with our teachers was like a work of art, the systems and structures that she had in place that she taught me. She became my unofficial mentor in so many ways and she would encourage me. She would say things like, Claire, you've got this, you're doing so well. And I would say, Linda, I've got this because you gave it to me. And she fluffed me off because she was so humble. She didn't want to hear that. Her work impacted how we teach, what we teach, and ultimately led to the success of our students. Today, what I do, how I do it, is grounded in what Linda taught me. She's had a profound impact on me and I will forever be grateful. So thank you for letting me recognize Linda here today. I really appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to speak a little bit on behalf of, on behalf of what Claire just discussed.
Absolutely.
So I just want to thank you, Claire, for bringing this up. People like Linda Newman are really, really hard to come by, and when you find a consultant, a good consultant, it's like it's winning a jackpot. And the thing about consultants is that they're always behind the scenes. Students don't know who they are. The parents don't know who they are. You know, the administrators, the school committee, nobody knows who these people are and yet they come and they do this every single day for our kids. And I just, I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention. I wish I could have met this woman myself. But I am, I am grateful for all of the work that she's done on behalf of North Smithfield. I know that we're a better school system because of it. Thank you.
Ex-under superintendent reports are the SR, SR funds or SR applications. And I just wanted to give you a quick update. The SIS2 grant has been submitted and it has been programmatically approved and we're working, waiting on fiscal approval, but it should be coming very soon, I think within, within days, if not, if not about a week. As part of the grant, we are running summer enrichment programs at all grade levels and we're really excited to have our students in the building this, this summer. At the elementary level, we're focusing in on those critical standards in English Language Arts and Math. And at the middle school, high school level, we're really focusing on social emotional learning and student engagement. And we felt like with COVID, that's really where we wanted to start with our older students. And I'll give you a couple of examples at the secondary level of what we're running. We have students participating in programs such as the fitness analytics, where students are combining fitness with technology and analytics. Students are also taking an American Red Cross babysitting classes and learning about child development and first aid while also earning their babysitting certification. Additional programs include farm-to-table, where the students explore gardening and healthy eating, and introduction to world languages, English Language Arts and Math support, review, games. There's a club called the Book at Beach Club, and these are just to name a few of our offerings. We also will have some transition activities for our fifth graders happening. And so I just wanted to share with you that we do have summer program going on, that it is our teachers that really just stepped up and just aided the really engaging programs that our students have participated in. So I'm thrilled with that. I also just want to recognize our teacher leaders that are helping to coordinate these programs are Jamie Kraus, Sarah Glover, Amy Wright, and Christine Welch, and they've been wonderful coordinating. So, so we're well, we're, we're well on our way. But the SR3 application, we actually haven't gotten the application yet. And so that's still with the Department of Ed and we don't know too much about it. The only thing that we're hearing is that there will be more restrictions with SR3 than there were with SR2, but we don't know what those restrictions are. And so we're at this time, we're just waiting to see how it unfolds and we'll certainly update you with, with any information as we proceed. Any questions?
Great, thank you. Any question?
Yes, please, I have a question. I'm just wondering, and only because I really don't know, how do students and families find out about these opportunities?
So they were all emailed to all families. Well, and I think they might all be linked to websites and not 100% sure on that, but I think they may be. But everything was mailed out and more than once. And so it, it brings you to what would look like a website. You click on the activities you want to participate in and sign up online.
Oh, and is this something that's ongoing all summer? So it's not like a program that you have to do for four weeks or six weeks or something like that?
It's ongoing and some programs are, you know, twice a week for five weeks. Other programs are different. It could be just two, two days that you're meeting, but you're meeting four hours a day for some. So they, there's just a variety of programming.
Oh, well, thank you very much. It sounds interesting and exciting. Thank you.
Any other questions? Assistant Superintendent, thank you. And Superintendent St. Jean, thank you. Is there any, anything else in reports?
No. You can.
All right. Item number four is for informational purposes, for us to know what the appointments are. And they are in front of you. Does anybody have any questions in regards to that?
I just want to, I just want to call out several of the names. First of all, Nathan, he was a part-time IA with us for too long and now we're able to move him up into a full-time 1.0 position. We are so thrilled to absolutely, to have him fully on board. Jennifer Rusin, I met her the other day. She is going to be the new Spanish teacher at North Smithfield High School. She comes from a number of years at Bishop Hendrickson. Wonderful, energetic, completely, wow, the interview team. And she just seems like she's going to bring a tremendous amount of energy to the, to the high school. And Nicole, Nicole was a long-term substitute for us last year. And just, just like Nathan, we're thrilled to have a full position. And just like Nathan, we're thrilled to have a full position for her because she is somebody that we just did not want to let go. So we're happy that she's staying on board.
Thank you, Superintendent. Moving on, does anybody have any questions? Moving on.
I just had something.
I said I don't have any questions, but I did want to point out that our clerk secretary is going to be the advisor for the senior class. I thought that that was very, very cool. Thank you.
All right, moving to old business, either the fiscal year '21 or '22 operating or capital budget superintendent? Is there anything to report on these?
Nothing to report.
Okay.
Anything to report? Would you? Hold on for a second, because I know Lisa hates this. Here we go.
Superintendent, I don't think we can hear her well.
Oh, Lisa, pull the microphone over and say it again. Let me zoom in on you closer. Okay, oh, very nice. Can you hear her now?
Not well. I can hear her, but it's slight, yeah.
We'll get it.
Is it on?
Better?
Very good, thank you.
We're continuing to work on closing out the year and the auditor is scheduled to come in the first week of August.
Great, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Moving on to item number six, new business, the acknowledgements by Matt Tech, certificates issued for the cheerleading Division II state championship win.
Well, thank you. I think last time I was up here at the podium, I promised I'd be back sooner than later regarding certificates. And that's really, I just want to acknowledge the credit to what the coaches and athletes did last year. I mean, we're talking still this year about mask mandates and things of that nature, but to know that that the students, athletes, and the coaches were able to persevere at such a high level, it just has to be commended just on that level alone. But I do want to acknowledge that obviously our competitive cheerleading team, the previous year, had won the state championship at Division IV. There were some less teams competing in Staten Island last year due to COVID restrictions, so they elevated our team up, our competitive cheerleading up and competing in Division II, and the result was the same. We won another championship, so we're putting another championship banner, so they are back-to-back state champions in competitive cheerleading. So that's good progress being made in that program, pretty excited about that. But I don't want to not acknowledge the fact that our boys tennis team was able to actually make the state championship finals. So after last school meeting we had, they did move their way through the playoffs. They competed in the state championship finals at Slater Park. They unfortunately lost 4-2 in that match, but they were down a player. We had a player that had left for vacation because usually scenes are over by the end of June. So we actually were down a player, so we automatically forfeited a point in that game. So it was a lot closer than what that final score was, so pretty proud of what the boys tennis team did. Our boys lacrosse team also made history for themselves in the program. They moved on to the state championship final game as well, too, losing to a very good Mount St. Charles team, but they did compete in the state championship as well, too. So again, a lot of spring teams moving to the playoffs, moving to the championship finals. Our outdoor boys and girls track team had many representatives in the state. One of the greatest moments for me, and I shared this out with administration, I sent pictures to them, that when we made the finals in the 100-meter hurdles, this is unheard of, it hasn't really happened in history before, but we got to the finals and there were eight runners that compete in the 100-meter finals. And wouldn't you know that North Smithfield came in first, second, and third in the 100-meter finals. So we have a state champion in Aiden Boldkin, who also won an indoor track, but he now added an outdoor track banner to the wall. And the runner-up were our second and third place finishers. That was pretty cool. That was a really cool picture to be shot out by the media and they talked about it, called it North Smithfield Hurdles Invitational at the state meet, which I thought was pretty humorous, but again, a real credit to what the work has been done with those athletes. Not to be outdone, though, the individual came in third place in the 100-meter hurdles, came back later on and won the state championship in the 300-meter hurdles. Matt Semeltoos did come back later on and put his own banner back up on the wall. We're excited because both him and Ray Marcel, who's a junior, both return next year as seniors. So the sky's the limit for them, and I thought Aiden Boschman finished off this senior year with a great finish by putting up two banners, indoor track and outdoor track, to the wall. So just that alone, I mean, the credit just goes to all of them, and to have that kind of finish, I think is really exciting and looking forward to eventually the expansion of our track and field program. This is something that the school committee got behind and the administration in this district got behind years ago when we added that program in. And now the results are paying off, and we're starting to see what's happening, and I think this will open up many doors to us, and we did have Jacqueline Durand, who did represent the females, in qualifying for the state meet as well, too. So we are putting representatives in North Smithfield into the state meet, and we are starting to put banners up on the walls on that. So just wanted to acknowledge them for the hard work that they've done, but forward to seeing what next year's athletic programs will bring to us, but thank you once again for all the support and congratulations.
All good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tech. Could I also ask that, Mr. Tech, I know, I believe we prepared them, but if we could have a list of the boys lacrosse and the boys tennis team, congratulating them to making it to the finals, I think that's a huge accomplishment, so let's get them certificates as well, if the school committee's okay with that.
Sounds like a plan. I'll make sure I get that to Fattamah.
And we'll have them ready to sign when you return, Chair Lombardi.
Sounds good, thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I add something?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to point out, and maybe Mr. Tech can guess these names at some point. We're a small school, and one of my daughters competed in four years at Swartz to school, and I know that it's hard to compete in Rhode Island as a small school, and a lot of that, it's not just our kids, our students, but the coaches really make, at this level, the coaches make a big difference. When we have that kind of success, the coaches make a big difference. I mean, I don't want to take anything away from the athletes, student athletes, because ultimately, they're the ones who do the work, but the coaches put a lot into, and I think we have some great coaches as well. Again, you don't win as a small school without good coaches.
I think that point is well articulated by yourself, and I'll absolutely do that. And that actually, I'm glad you brought that up, it reminded me of something I didn't want to say tonight, but it has to happen anyways, but we are unfortunately going to lose Coach Wes Tannington. He has accepted a new position at West Warwick High School as the new head coach for football over there. So it was an opportunity for him to move up into a higher division for football, and obviously a much larger school system, and in reference to that as well. And I think the guilt breaker for us was it was a half-mile from his house. So you really can't compete against a half-mile from a location, and he does have a very young family to consider, but I do want to take that time to thank him for all the years of service here at North Smithfield High School. He did bring home the first football championship here, and had definitely left the program in a much better place than what he inherited in. He will be remiss and sadly missed at that point, so just wanted to acknowledge that as well, too.
It's not going to be able to enjoy the new facilities.
No, no, no.
That wasn't enough, all right.
I'm sorry, half-mile, I think one of them, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further business? Does anybody have any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion been made, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.